Okay, so we have Chief Alcudino and Chief Jewitt, Pete, Trish, Charlie, Larry, Tina, Nancy, Jack, Debbie, and yourself.
Okay, great. I'm gonna call this meeting to order at 6 o'clock on the button. I appreciate everybody's time. Hopefully, we're having fun, although every time I say that, it's not. So maybe I should start saying it's gonna be a long meeting.
Right.
So, uh, first thing we'll start out with as always is, uh, let's go to Trish. Trish, a lot happened today, so why don't you give us a rundown?
Yes, um, so the first one was the legal call yesterday, um, and all-
Did you break up?
I'm sorry?
Are you breaking up?
Am I?
Yes.
Oh dear. Alright, let me maybe call in from myself.
Okay.
Alright, while she does that, go ahead Diane.
I was just gonna ask you, while she's doing that, can we do the minutes from March 27th and March 30th?
Okay, so, uh, great minds think alike. So could I get a member of the board to make a motion to approve the minutes as, uh, Diane just detailed?
So moved.
Okay, Charlie was so moved, second on that?
It's Larry.
I got a feeling Larry wants to be the second. You wanna be the second Larry? Maybe Larry's talking to mute?
I think he's with Trish.
He must be. Probably at the EOC. Uh, I'm gonna be-
Yeah, they're at the fire station.
I'm gonna be my own second.
Eric.
So I need all in favor Charlie?
Aye.
Okay, this is Trish calling in.
Kate Michael.
Okay, uh, is Larry on?
Yes, Larry's here with me at the fire station.
Okay, you guys, uh, you guys missed it, but we're trying to approve the minutes from the 27th and the 30th. I'm wondering if Larry's a yes to approve.
It's just, it's, uh- Matt, was that the 27th and the 30th?
Yeah, I'm, I got that right Diane, right?
Yeah, March 27th Friday, and then Monday, March 30th.
Are they all, all public or non-public?
All, they're just public.
So I'll make a motion to accept the minutes as written for March 27th and March 30th as written.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, we already had the motion, I'm looking for an acceptance, but I'll take that as your acceptance?
Oh, oh yes, absolutely, yep.
Aye.
Kate, what do you think? Kate's an aye, I'm an aye, so that's four Diane.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Trish, go ahead.
Okay, so now I'm on my cell. So let me make it perfectly clear, I was on the fire station phone, so you guys need to know, it wasn't that great. Okay, so yesterday, uh, the legal stuff, so we had a lot of legal stuff that's going on. Um, one of the questions or comments was that Maine, Maine has issued orders based on square footage of buildings, and they wanted to know if there was any thought to square footage limit to the amount of people allowed in a building. And the answer was, they'll keep it in mind, but, you know, it's not something they're considering at this point. Um, the state hasn't addressed this, but they did say that the Department of Education was getting a lot of information from schools and distance learning, and whether or not this violated the gathering rule. So Nancy Smith was gonna get more information about that. Another question was, last night after that Order 23 was issued that we sent out to you, um, they wanted to know about a bond attorney and to send bond documents that might be needed to be signed by town council referencing selectmen signing according to 91A. And the Hampshire Municipal, I mean, the Hampshire Municipal Association said they're aware of the issue, um, starting with the language in the emergency order 23, paragraph one, it clearly states that governmental bodies are relieved from certain statutory requirements, hence no bond. The intent of putting together this order and provisions was to allow municipalities to use electronic signatures regardless of whether or not they required to. Um, there's a separate statute under 93A that specifically deals with bonds and credit. That statute does, is not specifically referenced in this emergency order. Um, the 93A does talk about signatures that are manually created, and if you match this with the emergency order language about electronic signatures, um, municipal association said they thought this would be okay, it would be considered and okay to use with this emergency order. Um, the, another question was about notifications on positive COVID 19 tests, and being voluntary disclosure from patient, patients who say they may have it, like they may have some symptoms, they might be quarantined, or they might, might be waiting for results. Can this be documented by the department? The answer was yes, it can be documented, it doesn't violate restrictions, because it did not come from public health. Uh, you should be able to use this in the same way that you keep public health data, and then as we've been told, that is removed every 21 days, or not everything, but it's purged if it's 21 days old, and not to keep it any longer. And if the citizen reports back to you prior to that 21 days, then they should be removed. Uh, was another question that's really not relevant to us, I'm gonna skip over it. Um, there's another question regarding to upcoming planning board and zoning board meetings, um, and advice consistent, is the advice consistent with government orders? The municipal association weighed in and said, we've been advising land use boards that even under the rules of procedure, that a person can decide if the meeting is going to be canceled or postponed, it's not necessary that the board have a formal remote forum to make decisions. Another question, can the chairman with postponing make the call to postpone to a date where you don't need, uh, you know, without a date? And the answer is absolutely not. If the circumstances of COVID caused meeting to be postponed, if a reschedule is desired without additional notice, then the board would need to convene a meeting to do that. Another question was, is there an update on part-time employees being able to work more than normal? The answer is, as far as the Affordable Act, we have not heard of the federal waiver of this requirement. Depending on the type of work that is in question, there may be a case-by-case changes, i.e. police standards and training. This is being considered, but it hasn't helped yet. If you're talking about the retirement system on hours, there is an emergency exception in the statute that retirement said applied to these and won't be counted against their maximum. And they also answered that the state hasn't heard of a waiver from Department of Labor to waive any benefits. The Affordable Care Act for health insurance that would bring significant penalties to employers that have part-time go over the maximum, and this has not been waived, so be careful about that. Uh, there was another question about guidance, um, about dispatching centers, could they release community town information if they have an MOU on file? And again, the guidance is, it goes to the people that are supposed to be getting the MOU, um, and they don't want information out there, and they don't want paper copies floating around. There was another question about, um, they haven't been able to find a standard approach for accepting electronic signatures, and asked, you know, if anyone can recommend one, and the answer was certainly the standard DocuSign or Adobe Pro with the name and date and timestamp is sufficient. Um, also, the municipal association said they have a lock on a signature that allows them to put it in, why they are signing, so that it can't be altered, and suggest that you make sure you use a reputable software program. And the important piece on this, that, I don't know, maybe you guys already have done this, um, or it will become an action item, is that you have to have a policy in place regarding what you're gonna do for electronic signatures. Another town wanted to know if they had tie-back suits instead of a gown, and the answer is no, all they have is gowns. Another question was, this is kind of an extensive one, the question relating to the MOUs for positive disclosure. It enables disclosure of anyone who tests positive. However, there seems to be a delay in the time, and they don't understand the process of the lab to dispatch. Um, so they wanted to know, is there any guidance? What can, what can Department of Health and Human Services suggest? So the answer is, a lot of little bullets here. Um, a person goes to any one of 14,000 providers in New Hampshire to get a COVID test, and that simple, simply is sent, that sample is sent to a number of private or public labs in the state or out of state. Once the test is complete, then the results are shared to the original healthcare provider. It's then the responsibility of the provider to call the patient and let them know what the results are, and if positive, it's then shared with Department of Health and Human Services. Uh, once DPHS knows, they'll conduct an investigation about who that person has been in contact with, and when that person would be placed, um, on the DPH list, and the list is then shared with DESC, and the safety shares it with the community and the dispatch center. So if a person is from a nursing home or long-term care, that's sometimes when we run into problems, because the address listed for that person may not actually be where they live. Um, they're not concerned with the physical address, they're more concerned with the people that has been in contact with the positive person. And they're aware that the symptom does, this particular symptom has gaps, and they're working on it. There's also a delay, it's processing the test and getting the results. But once the results are in, it should go on a list, and they get the results as best they can, and contact the people that need to be contacted. A lot of information there. I don't know, sometimes I think we're gonna run in circles. Um, another question was expenditures of the budget, and as it relates to the town, where they haven't had the business meeting portion yet, can they spend money as was done in the previous year? They have normal operating budget and a capital reserve funds that pass through every year. Can this be expanded to normal articles that are traditionally passed through and approved each and every year? And the answer was, we have to take into account the statutes that you're operating under. The statute says you can make expenditures after January 1st for the amount that were appropriated at the previous town meeting, which includes operating budgets, budgets and sworn articles. There was another question on Executive Order 23, um, in section eight, it says that we have the choice to transition to phone, online, or app only. Can we conduct new marriage licenses on the phone or online, or do they still have to make an appointment with people? This can get complicated. The answer is, it would allow you to request that these be online. The intent of paragraph eight was to authorize municipalities to be more flexible and conduct, conduct things online that they may not ordinarily do. Um, this needs to be a judgment call, if something is not able to be performed online or over the phone, then your municipality can require the person make an appointment, but again, it's meant to create flexibility. There was another question, intimate and unemployment compensation. They have a couple employees that vacation got canceled, so they wanted to apply for unemployment for the two weeks that they would have been on vacation. They are part-time, so it would only add up to 20 hours. The answer is, we'll get this answer and call you back and connect with you with someone from Employment Security. Uh, there was another question about the liability of telling people that we aren't transporting them to the hospital. Can we get clarification? And Justin from EMS will call you, that was talked about also on another call earlier. And on the earlier call, they did say, if they don't wanna be transported, try to get them to sign it, and if they won't sign it, then write on the document, the first responder should write, refuse to sign, refuse transport. Um, also, municipal association or the Attorney General's office was speaking to the governor to provide the executive order to allow the moderator to postpone meetings and elections for 30 days, so we don't need to do it every 72 hours. I, I think I mentioned this on one of the other calls, you have to, you can only postpone every 72 hours. And it says, the way the statutes are, it's tough to deal with. But with something, it is something that the municipal association is talking about with the governor's office, to try to take care of this, because it is difficult to postpone meetings every 72 hours at a time. There was another question about annual meetings for fire department and fire districts, and what the procedure must be on postponement and, and regular fire department voting procedures. And the answer was, if in your charter or formation documents, you have specific dates or deadlines by which you have to have meetings or elections, if it is a meeting, then the provision in emergency order allows you to meet by charter or statute or ordinance to be waived for the deadline, and that would apply. For bodies like boards and things like this, if you can't reelect new offices of the commission until you have the meeting, then old officers continue to hold over status. So another question about budgets, um, they, they, even though the budget was limited to the operating budget, if a town last year had an article related to the specific use, specific balance, would that practice be reusable this year? And what the statute says is that what you may be able to expend reasonable in light of the prior year's expenditures. The answer was even, sorry, as long as the expenditures are consistent with the 2019 budget, the municipal association say that yes, that's acceptable. Um, there was another question, even if year after year voters approve funding for a particular purpose, if it involves borrowing, then that can't be used here, and the answer is, again, RSA 3213 says, the best we can offer is that if it goes along with the language, but simply says the prior year's expenditures, and it does not get dealt with in detail, and borrowing and bonds fall into RSA 33, so 3213 doesn't apply to borrowing, the bond is a separate issue. Okay, that's legal from yesterday. Now today. Um, current updates, um, 479 cases, five deaths, 73 hospitalizations. You probably saw on the news, the governor's state of emergency order has been renewed today, uh, since it's been 21 days. Uh, they're also talking about, the Department of Health and Human Services, they're still working on sourcing to get PPEs. There is a company in Littleton that's willing to help make masks. There's five healthcare facilities identified as stressed with sick employees or outbreaks. 1,700 beds around the state are ready, and quarantines also have been established. Military-wise, there's 13 sites complete and one in progress. And on the military side, seven quarantine sites complete, uh, four are being set up. Uh, they're also just trying to push shipments out, they said today and through the week. Every time we put in an order, they're, they're getting back to us in a reasonably, you know, speedy period of time. Um, but again, we're not getting things more than maybe once a week. They reminded us to track our costs, make sure that, um, you've written on all your invoices that COVID-19, because those are the invoices that Kim Hughes will send to Larry and me. Um, otherwise, you can, you know, make sure, you can just give them to us separately. But it's easier, instead of having papers float out there, if you give it to Kim, she'll make copies, or I'll go in and make copies. Um, there's also, they also reminded us in our environment that we're in, whether it's police, fire, EMS, maybe town hall if people are coming in and out, it says, as you've noticed, we're continuing to watch and clean common areas, remind people they should do the same if they're coming in and out, and continue to practice social distancing, and if that's not possible, they should be using masks. Um, then the next call was, okay, um, they're working on getting hospital status and bed space, uh, testing for first responders. There will be a document going out this afternoon for procedure regarding the 11 convenient MD locations. I think Larry and I just sent that to you quite late, 'cause we got it late. Um, so there's 11 locations around the state, and they're able to do testing for healthcare workers and first responders. The public health lab currently is no backlog, they're right up to date, and testing result wait time is only about 24 hours. If you're getting tested at a convenient MD, which is listed on the sheets that I sent to the selectmen, it might be worth bringing the sample yourself to 29 Hazen Drive in Concord, so you don't have to wait for a courier service. Um, Primex said if there is a test needed, they will reimburse the cost of testing. Uh, there was another question about why can't names of positives be released to us? This was an ambulance service that asked this question. Even though we're taking the same risks when responding to calls, patients are calling us to be transported to the hospital, and then when we get there, they're refusing to sign, they will not sign refusal. Um, we follow up with you, please, they said, we'll follow up you, give us a call, but if the patient refuses, just write, refuses to sign. There was another question from an MD, EMG that said, is there a plan, this is scary, is there a plan for temporary morgues in our area? And actually, there was a planning cell, uh, conference call this morning, and they just said, there's more to come on that. There's another question, if we have an unknown source of COVID, Primex wouldn't cover it, was the question. Um, does Primex only cover source patients that we encounter on the job? And the answer was, if you've contracted COVID, not on the job, you could utilize your own private insurance for testing, but you can still go to the first responder locations, um, to get priority results, and this includes your family members. They will also be covered as a first responder. Make sure, or first responder testing, I should say. Just make sure you check off that box on the form that says you're a first responder. Uh, another question, are EMGs and health officers of a town considered prioritized as first responders? And the answer is yes, they are considered priority. Another EMG asked about nurses in schools trying to put together a newsletter for distribution for mental health tips, and they said, um, we'll collaborate with, uh, the Department of Education and DHS, and we'll reach back out. The Fire Academy also offered to share their resources on that. Another EMG asked, would full-time staff working part-time in other communities not be covered by Primex or other insurance if they are exposed? And the comment was, some departments have asked full-time members not to work in other capacities, whether private or public entities. But they also said they're not gonna weigh in on that at the state level. Reach out to Primex and see what Primex is recommending. Um, another, a fire department asked, or commented that they utilize an old ambulance as a rescue vehicle. Could it be used as a transport vehicle? And the answer was, if you're thinking of converting it to a transport department, contact the division. We are, we are looking into a waiver to allow alternative vehicles to be used as transport vehicles. Another EMG commented that a church that operates a preschool, the employees there are wondering if they are exempt employees, can they file for unemployment? And the answer was, we'll discuss it with unemployment and get back to you. Another EMG, this is kinda cute, um, another EMG said, we host monthly bingo's to raise funds, and they've lost $1,800 now, and I'm wondering if they can put in for reimbursement through the federal emergency grants for the bingo money? And the answer was, keep track of what you've lost, and we'll leave it to you. See, I think we have to have bingo now. And then-
I think it's gambling, no matter which way you look at it.
There you go, I know. And then the last question is, do we, have we done any forecasting on what percentage of the population will need to be hospitalized when the peak, and when the peak will be? You know, I would've said, I don't have a crystal ball, but the answer was, we're looking at modeling. It's like tracking a hurricane. Hopefully, we can get information out to the public about the surge capacity and how many beds we have in the state, but that's all we can say right now. So that's it for the three calls.
Alright, thank you, that's a lot.
Lot of information there. Some of those things-
Thank you.
You're welcome. You know, and if you have any questions, call me. I mean, I just keep going, because we've got so many people on the call.
My, uh, my hope is, there's gonna be one of these meetings where you have nothing to share with us, and that'll be a good sign for us all.
That would be beautiful.
That may be a ways out. Um, alright. Was somebody gonna say something? Okay, so, um, Diane, what's on our, our list before we add new stuff? Is there something out there we had to, uh, we, uh, put on the agenda?
I think everything's been taken care of, right? Um, you got your list of employees that are affected by the, um, COVID-19, it's not working, you got that?
Yeah.
Um, the, I put out on the website for the building department, that's all set. The online permitting is there now.
Okay, so, what I wanted to propose to the board is, I'll give you an example, and obviously, this is a small sample size, but I went in to sign a document, I think it was Monday or something like that, and I think it was at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, and I'm like, great, I can go in and sign a document, and I won't have to worry about anybody being there, 'cause the town hall is closed. However, we had Mary Jo doing her thing by herself, so she had, you know, cars, she's doing cars in the parking lot, so it's by appointment and everything, so that doesn't bother me that much. But we still have people working in the town hall, which I was surprised at this point, so I'm wondering what the, uh, board feels about that. Do we wanna make any sort of stricter guideline about people working in the town hall?
If possible, I would be in favor of that, having seen so many cases and silent carriers, and we really wanna keep our numbers here down, to keep everyone safe.
Yep.
And you can't really monitor everyone, they're not wearing masks, so, yes.
I think we need to find out who is working in the town hall, and why they feel they need to do it in the town hall and not remotely. Um, for example, the bookkeeper, payroll clerk, may need to do the payroll there to print the checks, kinda thing, so she can't do that from her home.
So, I agree with that, and I'm, I'm not gonna, I think your example, Lisa, was just a, you know, hypothetical, um, 'cause I don't think that happens at our place. But the, here's my thing, which I feel strongly about, is we do have to find out who is there, and we do have to find out why they're there, and this is what I feel strongly about. Um, people don't like change, I understand that, and we need to get at the heart of why. And normally, you have to be a two-year-old, or you have to say, why, 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 why? Because there's accommodations we can make, I think, so people can work from home. Um, so, the why, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll give you, you know, if it's an example, I feel more comfortable here, you know, I have all my stuff here, we gotta figure out why they need that stuff. And what I think has to happen is, we can't do this in two weeks. Would you guys agree with that? We can't, we can't give people two weeks to figure this out. Um, I think, uh, one of the things is, and this would be the hammer of the whole thing, is we do have the ability to change the door locks, change the codes. So, I, I basically think we need to find out who and why by Monday, and then we need to, on Monday night's meeting, can do non-public if we have to, on Monday night's meeting, we have to consider the whys, and basically, change the codes to only those people that are gonna be allowed on-site on Tuesday. So what's the board thinking of that?
Yeah, and they should be the exception, not the rule.
Exactly.
In favor. And I just think, the people who have to be there, like Mary Jo, I, the CDC just recommended masks. So if we can find one for her-
Yeah, sure, yeah.
I think, it's, you know, she's precious.
I'm sure we can get her-
We need to keep her safe, everyone there needs to be kept safe.
Yeah.
'Cause even if-
Stay with the other-
Cars, if that continues, that's still-
Well, she also posted that she was making some changes again for how she was doing.
Yeah, right, right.
But I mean, with this new directive that we're considering, does this mean that people will still be able to make appointments with her in their cars? Whereas as time goes on, we're going to suggest anything that can be done without, in-person needs to get done that way, right? Like, I don't know if she, that's what's happening now.
Well, I almost, I almost-
Can you please keep in mind that I'll still need access to the food pantry?
Right. Well, that, that would be a why that I couldn't get around. You know what I mean? It's, it's-
Right. That's an example of that.
Yeah, we're not going to put it in your house, right? I think Brian would kill us if we, uh-
Yeah.
If we did that. So, I mean, so that's a good example. What do Larry and Charlie, what do you think about my proposed schedule to take care of this?
Well, I'll get, I'll give you my opinion on the situation. I don't think there's any more, any more people in that building that needs to be in that building. Cheryl was in there one day and we allowed her to go in one day a week to help Mary Jo out. And then the payroll clerk was in there and the only other one that has been in that building was Nancy. And then Mike Jewett did go in to change, to fix the lock so that I could get in the building. Other than that, I haven't seen anybody in that building, like, I mean, not like Matt.
I knew who you were talking about. So you haven't seen, you haven't seen them, but-
Nope, but what I have seen is Mary Jo, she's, she's doing registrations in the parking lot.
Right, right, right.
And because one day when I was there, I did help her out, I went to the door and got the guy's check.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that guy buggered it down.
I'm sure there's all kinds.
Oh, they did, they did.
Larry, what do you think?
Maybe he's muted.
Larry might be muted. So I'll, I'll kind of, I'll put it out there, because I know Nancy's on the phone. Nancy, are you able to work a hundred percent from home?
It's not easy. I try and, um, I just don't have everything at home. And the reason I was in there this week was doing the state report as well as getting other documents to work at home. It's not as big an issue for me to work from home as it is for Kim, because Kim has to be there. Everything she has is there in her files, her computer, as Lisa said, running checks, doing the, the accounting. I mean, she really has to be there and I've told her many times, if she wants to work from home, she said, I really can't. So that, I think you need to hear from Kim on, but if, if you want us all out of there permanently, I'll stay out. It's just, and do I have permission to go in and get other documents for other work?
Yeah, that's what we're going to discuss Monday, right?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see there that there's any concern about the going to pick up the mail or going to grab a piece of documentation. It's the, really what it comes down to is, you know, if Kim was the only person in the building all week-
Yep, yep.
We probably wouldn't have a problem with it, right? But what happens is Kim's in there, you know, Mary Jo's in there, now Nancy's in there, you know, one of us comes in there. So you start to, you start to have the problem, the more people you have coming back and forth. So I think you are right. I think Kim needs to tell us specifically what's holding her back and how we, how we can help her accommodate that. Because if something's impossible, it's impossible. Tina just gave us the best example, right? But again, Tina's only on one floor. We could limit her to one door and that'd probably work, you know? She could be in there and not ever see anybody, so.
And just so the board knows, I only went in this week. I've been home the last two weeks.
Okay, that's good.
And the other, the other, the other person you have to think about is Jim, because he has been going in on Thursday and Monday again. So, you know, he, I can tell him if you don't want him in the building.
He, he shouldn't be in there. He should have a laptop computer so he can do, especially since they canceled their April meeting.
Yeah, he doesn't have a laptop and, um, I don't know if he's set up with his personal computer to log into the town computer, I'm not sure. Diane would know that.
See, I, I know that you don't know, but-
He does not.
So there, there's an example of a obstacle we can get out of the way.
Mm-hmm.
So we can get him set up electronically. Uh, so what does the board think of my proposal? By Monday at six o'clock, we need to know, and, you know, Nancy or Diane, you can send this out to department heads, we need to know who needs to have access to the town hall and, um, you know, for what amount of time and then why they need access. And we can, we can skip, we can skip Mary Jo, because I think we've figured that one out, but all the other department heads should come back with that. Is the board okay with doing that?
Yeah. I'm in favor with just one discussion about, I'm unclear how the food pantry is working there, so how is the food put into town hall and taken out of town hall? Just want to make sure I know.
I guess that's a Tina question.
She did have, she did have somebody drop off some food today. It was mostly canned goods, but there was some toilet paper rolls and stuff like that. So I did contact her and let her know it was outside the door and Tina did run in to bring it inside.
Yeah, I missed, I couldn't make out part of that question, Kate, what was it?
No, I just wanted to know how, you know, the food pantry is being handled safely with, you know, items being left and brought back and forth inside the town hall.
Yeah, I'm doing as much, uh, it's basically so far, it's all been no contact. You know, people let me know if they're dropping off donations and then, you know, I make arrangements either myself or my husband goes and brings it in. And, um, you know, whenever anybody has needed anything from the food pantry, I take down a list of what they need and then I put it together myself and leave it outside the, um, you know, the back door at town hall and tell them to pick it up at a specified time.
Okay, great. And you know, you, I'm sure you already know how long it supposedly is, remains on objects and you're taking every precaution to keep yourself safe.
Sorry, you're breaking up.
No, I just said I, I'm assuming you know how long it's on objects and that you're just making sure you keep yourself safe.
Oh, yeah, that's really-
Okay, great.
Yeah, absolutely, I'm totally aware. I work for, my other job is at a home care agency, so I have all the supplies.
Okay, good, thanks.
All right, so, um, either Nancy or, um, or Diane, are you okay with sending out that email?
Yeah, Diane and I can talk and we can, we can work on it together.
Okay. Great. Um, all right, so that, that was one thing I, I had on my mind. Any, anybody else have anything?
No.
Larry just said no.
Matt, I have one quick question.
Sure.
You guys were talking about the e-sign or whatever. Um, I know I did send out an email to the board. If, if people have trouble signing it, they can just email me and say it's okay for me to put the name on the form or whatever.
Yeah, I was going to say, I was going to say that I would like to propose to the board that that's the process we adopt, would be to email Nancy via email you say you approve. Nancy puts, types in the name with the date she got your approval.
Don't move. I like the idea of electronically signing if we're able to do so, which I am, I electronically signed that, uh, MS sign, uh, form.
So here's the only problem is, here, here's the only problem for me in that case. I have to go get my town laptop, I have to boot it up, I have to plug it into my printer, I have to print it out, I have to sign it, I have to scan it.
Do you electronically sign it? No, you don't.
Okay. So if Lisa wants to electronically sign it, I guess she can, but I'm, I'm thinking of expediency and I look at email on my phone all day. So if I see an email, I approve. I can just bounce back an email on my phone and say, I approve. So that's, that's where I'm going.
And I-
It's the same, it's the same thing with me, Matt. I already tried it and my computer wouldn't let me do it. So I turned around and gave Nancy my permission.
Yeah, I talked with Kim and Kim agrees, if you all just send her an email, she can, she can electronically put your signatures or attach the emails to the manifest and that would suffice for her, so, and I'm fine with that too.
What's the rest of the board think?
Oh, okay.
In favor, electronically.
Yeah, electronic's good. Yep. So let me, let me, uh, propose a, a motion here. So my motion is to, for, until further no, notice, the board will sign, how did they define it in the order? The common town documents electronically, either by e-sign or an email to the, to, an email of approval. Let me clean this up, Diane, sorry. Okay, so my motion is for the board to adopt electronic signatures until further notice using either e-sign or an email of approval. Can I get a second?
Second to motion.
Second.
Okay, Kate won, so any, uh, any-
Quick question.
There's not competition here, guys.
Quick, quick question, Matt.
Go ahead.
Did we, did Tricia say we have to have a policy to do this or not?
That's, that's what I'm doing right now.
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay, okay.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, roll call, Charlie?
Aye.
So I guess Larry was an aye for Charlie, or are you doing it for yourself, Larry?
I'm doing my, Charlie's doing his, aye.
All right. Larry, are you an aye?
Aye.
Okay, Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
Okay, and Matt's an aye. So that, that's unanimous.
Hey, Matt?
Yeah?
Matt?
Trish?
Tricia and I, I don't know if this would help at all, you were looking for the language, um-
Yes, please.
If you want to know what's in Order 23, the language was to allow the selectmen to sign manifests and all other documents necessary for continued operation of local government.
So Diane, can you, uh, copy that language?
Can I? Yeah, I'll figure it out.
Yeah, it's off of Order 23.
Thank you.
Should be in the inbox somewhere, thank you. All right, anything else for this call?
Can I say one more thing, Matt?
Sure.
No, um, no, I know, I'm sorry, this is just a quick thing. I know you're looking at the spreadsheet that Kim did and Kim and I are working on that together. I just want you to know that some of the COVID hours are a little bit off, so they're going to change because people didn't understand how to account for their COVID hours. So they, there will be less COVID hours, I just want you to know that. It will change by next week.
All right, thanks.
Everybody, yeah, everyone's doing a good job, but I had to call a lot of people.
Yeah, just update it as necessary and we'll-
Okay.
We'll look at it.
Matt, I have one more question, please.
Go ahead.
Um, the, the document that's on the table that the board needs to sign, um, how do you want me to proceed with sending that out?
Uh, you don't have-
If I have three signatures? Okay, go ahead.
So, wait a minute, wait, okay. So the document is the legal document?
Yeah.
Okay. So my interpretation, and I could be wrong, is that that is a document that wouldn't fall under Order 23?
Okay.
So the, uh, we have three signatures now, we'd like to have two more. If we're not going to get two more, then we need to let Nancy know so she can send it out. I think it's important. If, if somebody, and I'll even put this out here, if, if somebody doesn't want to go in to sign this document, we could have them print it out on their home printer, they could sign it and then send it US mail back to the town hall and those of us who are okay with going in to sign it could then sign it. If that accommodates.
I also just sent an email to the attorney to see if they're, if there's any document sign capability they have as well, if people, someone cannot go in to sign it. So I'll let you know as soon as I know.
Yeah. The, um, you know, I can, I can say this much in a public meeting, it is documentation of a legal settlement, so that's why I think it's important to show that all five board members signed it, uh, since in the minutes, it will show that they were in favor of it, so. Um, but per norm, everything else, minutes and, uh, you know, all this, all this other stuff will be electronic signatures, so that'll help out a lot.
Yep. So one more thing, if we have three signatures, how about I mail it and then if the other selectmen, um, don't want to go in to sign it, they could sign it and send it to the attorney directly?
No.
No, okay.
I, I think it's vitally important that the signature page has everybody's signature or everybody who, who is comfortable signing it.
Okay.
So can I offer a suggestion here then?
Yeah, go ahead.
The two selectmen that didn't, haven't gone in to sign it, are you, and they're not coming in to sign it, I will pick it up and go to your house, you can sign it and then I will put it back there, back off of the town hall. Are they okay with that?
So I am not one of them.
I don't have a problem with coming in to sign either.
Okay.
I don't have a problem with coming in.
Okay. Kate, are you the one having trouble going in, coming in to sign it?
I am not, I'm not going to be coming in to sign it, that is why email the attorney.
Then if I come to your house, if I come to your house, will you sign it?
As long as there is no physical distance, as we practice very safe distancing, yes.
Yes, I, what I will do is I will throw it on your porch, you'll sign it, you throw it back out.
I'll make sure to throw it though, or it's not-
It's called, it's called doorbell ditch.
Yeah. So will that solve the issue?
It would, if, and if by any chance I hear from the attorney before that, uh, I'll let you know.
Well, I'm going to do it tomorrow morning. What time can I drop it off to you?
Uh, let me, do we need to do this here? Yes?
Now, you can do that offline, but Diane, thank you for the-
I'll email you, Diane, thanks.
Yeah. Um, all right, so anything else for tonight? So, uh, I'll entertain a motion at this point to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All right, Larry beat Charlie. We're going to call Charlie the second and, uh, roll call, Charlie, you in favor?
Aye.
Larry?
Aye, aye, aye.
All right, Kate?
Aye.
Lisa?
Aye.
And I'm going to be a nay, just because I feel there should be at least one nay on everything we do.
Okay.
That, that's a joke, Diane, I'm going to be honest.
Okay, good.
So, again, Friday night, thanks everybody for your patience in coming on the call. I'm available all weekend, like I continually joke, the social life's not that interesting right now. So if you have any problems, give me a call on my cell. But everybody else, have a good night and a good weekend.
You too.
Thanks.
Bye.
Good night. Have a good week.